These motherfuckers.
Well, I'm, I'm waiting to see, you know, I'm being fair, you know? Let's see how he goes. How he does in his afterlife. So speaking of horrific shit that we have to talk about. This one really gets my goat because it's the amount of like, people who are like, oh my gosh, clutching their pearls about this horrible conversation that happened between these LA city council members in LA. In a recorded conversation that was leaked online by guess who? LA Times, who supports Julian Assange, of course. Or they did in 2019 circa 2019, they really came out in support of Julian Assange. So a broken clock is right twice a day, but most of the time they're wrong on shit. But this time they're right again and they have leaked this audio and had said that yes, it's against the law, but it's newsworthy. So we don't give a fuck. So they pulled into Julian Assange themselves and leaked this audio. So this audio is not specifically in this article. We're going to get to it in the next one. Cause oh my gosh. But I want to have the one hour audio because there's supposed to be an hour long conversation of this leaked on Reddit, which was immediately deleted because acceptable use, I guess. On Reddit, because Reddit's been doing that for a while as well. Cutting down on people sharing certain. Yeah, yeah. And they, have you even heard about the thing with Gillian Maxwell? Was allegedly an account, had an account on Reddit and had a relationship with the Reddit CEO? Like there's a whole bunch of shit.
No. Are we gonna have to do a Reddit show?
Yeah, Reddit, you know, they have their own issues. So anywho, um, Nuri Martinez is the president of our LA city council, which I didn't vote on any of these people. So I can say whatever I want about these people. Cause I didn't vote on anyone. I did vote on someone who was mentioned. I voted for them stupidly and then they ended up going with her on the fucking map, the vaccine mandate, which was horrific for our county. And then they eventually overturned it, not overturned it, but got rid of it and took it off the table for now. You know, and then brought it back on the table for later. But I made a comment, a public comment that's on the record about that on that day. That they should get rid of it entirely. And that's where I stood. So anyway, that was a racist, if you recall. The, the amount of people who were not getting injected, I'm going to tread lightly here. Were the amount that, that were not getting it. Were.
Lisa.
People who are not white, I'll say. So Latino and black. Mainly majority black and Latino people were rejecting getting injected.
Yeah, because there's a history that most people forget. You know, the, the Tuskegee experiments and, and just, you know, like the people that have been most oppressed and, and you know, like been stepped on over and over again. I know Peaches, it's upsetting. It is. I agree with you.
Basically they were being punished and segregated against. And I was against it from the very beginning because of the segregation aspect of it as well as the human rights violation that I, I, I saw in it, which is there. And also it didn't work and they had to call it a failure and get rid of it. But anyway, people didn't comply. People were upset. Businesses were not playing along and then they eventually got shelved it. So basically they had that for, I don't know if it was a year, but it was a long fucking time. Until like October of last year, I believe they had the vaccine mandate. And it was a long fuck, not even October. It was like earlier this year, I think. That it got, they got rid of it. I don't know exactly when it was, but it was a long time that they had it. And these motherfuckers voted for it and were like majority like for it. And then eventually got rid of it. So just keep in mind that they already were racist as fuck before this happened. Because that was targeting minority people in LA. So whatever they say here, this is what they're saying. This is what they say behind closed doors to each other, about each other. But they did worse to the city. So just keep that in mind. So let's get to the article. No more dilly-dallying and see what LA Times says here. So they say three Latino members. I hate when you go to any website and it automatically wants to fucking sign you up Google. Sign you in on Google. And it's like, I don't even go here. Leave me alone. Why you have to do that? It's like Facebook, like when they would try to sign you in on everything.
Yeah, it's like signing with Google. It's like, I don't even want to.
Fuck out of here. Anyway, three Latino members of the LA city council and a top county labor official held a conversation last fall that included racist remarks. This was while the vaccine mandate was going on, by the way. So they were already being actively racist in the community without these words. So anyway, but where is that? So that included racist remarks, derisive, derisive statements about their colleagues. And then council president Nuri Martinez saying a white councilman handled his young black son as though he were an accessory. According to a recording of the meeting reviewed by the times. Martinez, while discussing councilman Mike Bonin's child said, parece changuito. Changuito, or he's like a monkey soon afterward.
Oh my god.
Yes. Worse than that. Well, here's some of the audio. It's, it's a doozy. After the article. So a few minutes after Martinez discussed Bonin's son, the topic of conversation moved to LA county district attorney George Gascon, who was facing growing political opposition. Fuck that guy, she said, followed by something inaudible. He's with the blacks. You'll get, you'll get to hear that. Don't worry. We're gonna listen to it. Don't you, I got you guys. We'll go to different websites.
Fuck. I've never spoken like that in my, like that way in my life.
And she again, this proves that it's not like a racist, white, white racist kind of ideology. That anyone can have those perceptions about other people in any ethnicity, you know? During the conversation with council members Gil Cedillo and Kevin De Leon and Los Angeles County Federation of Labor President Ron Herrera. Martinez also described Bonin at one point as a little bitch, which is not even the worst thing she said. Like that's, that's nothing compared to the other things she's like, nothing. De Leon appeared to compare Bonin's handling of his child to Martinez holding a Louis Vuitton handbag. He also referred to Bonin as the council's fourth black member. Mike Bonin won't fucking ever say peep about Latinos. He'll never say a fucking word about it. He said, on Sunday, after this article was published online, Martinez issued a statement apologizing for her comments, saying, in a moment of intense frustration and anger, I let the situation get the best of me and I hold myself accountable for these comments. For that I am sorry.
Hold yourself accountable? Wait a minute.
Now context matters too, of course.
It's like, I hold myself accountable. You don't need to hold me accountable. I'll just hold myself accountable because that's what got me saying these fucking awful things.
Okay, then she says, the, the context of this conversation was concerned over the redistricting process and concern about the potential negative impact it might have on communities of color. Ugh, that word. My word speaks, my work speaks for itself. I've worked hard to lead the city through its most difficult time. You suck at it. And also nobody talks this way at work, not me. You're like, I'm, I'm a little more professional.
Spoken that way, like.
Actual epithets to people at work. You just don't do that.
For anyone in general.
Like in general, like I've never spoken that way. I don't think that way. I don't speak that way. So I definitely wouldn't speak that way in a professional setting like.
Then you should be focused on redistricting process and not people's children and shit and calling people's children names. Like maybe don't do that. Just at work, maybe not. Also on Sunday, De Leon called the comments wholly inappropriate and said he had fallen short of the expectations we set for our leaders. Don't worry. I don't have any expectations for you. I never voted for any of you. I regret appearing to condone and even contribute to certain insensitive comments made about a colleague and his family in private, she said in this statement. I've reached out to that colleague personally and now you're talking about him publicly. Good for you. Cedillo contacted Saturday night by the time said, I don't have a recollection of this conversation. Well, yeah, it was months ago. Why would you remember? But also you shouldn't fucking say it. Herrera didn't respond to several requests to comment, but Julie Gutman. Goodman, Dickson, a lawyer representing the LA county federation of labor, sent a letter saying the conversation was recorded in violation of California's privacy and recording laws on LA, LA county federation of labor property. If the Times published information from it, it's condoning this illegal conduct. Apparently she didn't get the memo that they supported Julian Assange because they don't give a shit. Times.
What the fuck? They think, oh, so it's okay because that's why she felt free enough to speak there? Because she thought that it wouldn't be able to be legally recorded? It wouldn't hold up? Like that would be your defense?
Times general counsel Jeffrey Glasser responded to Goodman Dickinson in a letter Sunday morning defending the newspaper's right to publish the material. It is a fundamental principle in the United States that we do not prohibit or publish, sorry, punish the receipt and publication of newsworthy information. Glasser wrote, the conversation took place in October 2021 and focused heavily on council members frustration with maps that had been proposed by the city's 21 member restrict, redistricting commission. Latina residents made, make up roughly half of LA's population, but represent less than a third at, of the council's districts. A fact that has led to complaints that the population is not being fairly represented. Audio of the wide ranging, roughly hour long conversation was posted on Reddit. There it is by a now suspended user. It is unclear who recorded the audio, who uploaded it to Reddit and whether anyone else was present. The leak comes a month before, look at the timing, a subs, a consequential city election in which the mayor and several council seats are being contested. Martinez has endorsed several council candidates in the November 8th election, which is going to be nothing now. And they're late and they're late. Their fate. I read late because I'm, I'm blind. Okay. Could determine whether she retains the powerful council presidency. Wow. You know, it happens, but when you actually hear it, it's unbelievable. The now suspended Reddit user said in text accompanying the audio according to a screenshot reviewed by the times. The labor movement is in bed with city hall. The group discussed the city's once a decade process of redrawing council district boundaries, which was underway at the time, as well as the need to reelect Latinos council members and ensure that heavily Latino districts did not lose economic assets such as USC and Van Nuys airport. This is a fucking game with these fucking people. They're all in high school. It's ridiculous. Bonin's son was brought into the conversation as the group discussed a dispute between council members current price and Marquis, Marquis Harris Dawson, who were at odds last year over whose district would represent USC and exposition park since, once the new maps were finalized. Both men are black and represent parts of South LA. Martinez told the group she had a conversation with business, businessman Danny Bakewell about the situation and argued that if Harris Dawson was seeking an economic asset for his district, that he should seek to move LA international airport out of Bonin's West Side district and into his. Go get the airport from his little brother, this little bit, that little bitch Bonin, she recalled advising.
Who the fuck talks like that in a professional setting?
You'll hear, we are getting, we're getting to the audio. Don't worry.
We're not professionals here on this show. We, we talk how we want because we, we have freedom of speech. But like, what the fuck is happening?
Human decency as well. So anyway, Martinez said that Bonin appeared with his son on a float in a Martin Luther King Jr. Day parade that featured a number of politicians. She also said the child was an accessory. De Leon seemed to compare Bonin's handling of the child to when Nuri brings her little yard bag or the Louis Vuitton bag. And I'm not going to read that one. Like on the side, she said, she said something racist. Using a Spanish diminutive, diminutive term for a black person that can be considered demeaning. I would say so.
What the fuck? How, how does this, how does someone be, how does everyone else that was around this woman? Allow her to speak this way without speaking up and standing up and saying hello? No, this is wrong. I wouldn't allow that.
They talk that way too, apparently. Martinez suggested the child was misbehaving on the float. All this part, y'all gotta listen. You're gonna listen to it. Don't worry. And I'm gonna save, let's scroll down because we're gonna listen to it. So we don't want to spoil ourselves. But anyway, in an interview Saturday night, go to that part if you're still looking at it.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah. We're gonna skip that part because we're gonna read it later. Uh, where am I? Okay. Not people. Forgot where it was. Okay. There I am. Okay. In an interview Saturday night, Bonin said he attended the MLK parade in 2017 with his young son and was angry and heartsick over the remarks. On Sunday, he and his husband Sean Arian called on Martinez, De Leon and Herrera to resign. The entirety of the recorded conversation displayed a repeated and vulgar anti-black sentiment and a coordinated effort to weaken black political representation in LA, they said in a statement. Any parent reading her comments will know she is unfit for public office, they said of Martinez. No child should ever be subjected to such racist, mean and dehumanizing comments, especially from a public official. It is painful to know we will someday, he will someday read these comments. At another point in the conversation, the group discussed councilman Mark Ridley Thomas indictment and whether he should step down or fight to hold on to his seat, whether he would do that. A few minutes later, she said she explained to another councilman learned that if he were to be suspended, round, uh, city controller Ron Galperin would decide whether he still gets paid. You need to go talk to that white guy. It's not us. It's the white members on this council that will motherfucking you, motherfuck you in a heartbeat is what I think it says. The council later suspended Ridley Thomas, who is awaiting trial on a federal bribery charge. That's what we're dealing with here, guys.
Wait, I could I just ask something real quick? Okay. So right here in this where they say mother F dash, dash, instead of putting motherfuck you in a heartbeat. How does, how does it like, we, we know what it said, we know what that means.
Yeah.
If, if we can say mother F, how come we can't say motherfuck? How come we can't say the actual word? Like, really? It's a quote.
If a child is reading this, by the way, they shouldn't be because like it's very inappropriate for children.
Yeah, this is not, this is not appropriate for children, but I'm just like, they, they, they. It's quoted, you know what I mean? If you're quoting something that is said, then you know, you should quote it.
They can say the N word before, because they can't say that. Okay. Not that N word, but the other one, you know, they were saying. Anyway, the group heavily criticized the maps created by the city's redistricting commission. Martinez voiced frustration that the panel had promote, proposed removing a number of economic assets from her San Fernando, Fernando Valley district, including the Van Nuys airport and the Anheuser Busch brewery. If you're going to talk about Latino districts, what kind of districts are you trying to create? Again, she sees everything, they see everything and like Latino this and everything else, fuck that, right? So that's a lot of racism going on because you're talking away our assets. Taking away our assets. You're just going to create poor Latino districts with nothing? At another point, Cedillo.
Like they should just be fair in general. It shouldn't be about, uh, you know, like a race or this or that. We should, we should not be exploiting people.
They're trying to get votes. They're exploiting these people for votes. And it's very clear in their audio when you, you hear it for yourself. There's no other conclusion. But Cedillo said there were certain council members who did not merit rescuing. So we'll get to that later. That's going to be on the audio. So don't worry about that. So going down, going down, let's go down to the end. So basically it ends here. Herrera, the labor official later said that removing Ridley Thomas was necessary regardless of potential political blowback, arguing the scandal would hurt all incumbents and make people think that the council's corrupt. Who would think that?
Where did you, where did you go?
That's the end. Herrera, the part, yeah. We don't want to spoil ourselves because we gotta listen to that audio. It's insane. And it's pretty clear in the next article that you'll see that we'll be able to preface it and everything. So, okay.
This is nuts. This is absolutely nuts. I, I, racism from any aspect in any way is, it's, it's wrong. It's absolutely wrong.
If they do put someone in, that person has to support the three of you, he said. The one who will support us is Heather Hutt. Oh yeah, that's in the audio too. We'll listen to it. De Leon then floated nonprofit director Irma R. Munoz as a possible replacement for Ridley Thomas, noting that she's married to an African American and she lives up to, she lives up in Baldwin Hills. Last month, the council voted to install Hunt, Hut, sorry, as Ridley Thomas interim replacement. And this was written by staff writers Gustavo Ariano, sorry, and Brittany Mejia, contributing to the report. And the original authors are David Zunizer, Julia Wick, Benjamin Oreskus, Dakota Smith, Gustavo Ariano. Six hours ago. So this is breaking news today.
So yeah, people's comments down here, people are just completely shocked.
Yeah, but again, these are people who are like clutching my pearls about this, but don't care about segregating. Some people, I don't want to say everybody, but a lot of them.
Not everybody, but yeah, there's not enough, there's not enough equal outrage. Like we, we have equal outrage. We're outraged about the things that should be.
You know, words versus actions. That's where we live. So I put in the new article. Oh, uh, I'll put that in the chat as well. Am I having an echo? Cause I have sort of one for me, but I don't know if it's.
No, not for me.
Okay, good. I'm glad. I think you would have told me at some point. Let me put the article. I have the non-paywall one, which is the news break. That's why I put news break in there, guys, because LA Times is paywall. Oh, it's really la, long. I can't put it in. That's what she said. I'm inclusive. Anyway. Does anyone ever get my inclusive jokes? I can't. I don't know what they do. Do you get it, Steve? I'm inclusive. All right. I am.
I think I wrench Lisa. I know you guys were saying to wrench Lisa. I wrench Lisa. So everybody had wrenches? Everybody got wrenches?
Let's hear them for what they are. We can't just read it. We have to hear it. I had to hear it. So I did my due diligence. I looked on Twitter and I said, LA council, LA city council audio, leaked audio. And I found it on knock LA. Maybe I should share it so I can play all the audio. I don't want you to have to do everything.
Well, do you, yeah, do what? It doesn't matter to me. You, if you know where to start, I haven't, I haven't, this is all news to me. This is breaking to me too. So.
Actually I can't share. It's not, oh, present. It says present now.
Yeah.
Okay.
They changed it in the stream yard.
All right. Let me present it then. Uh, at least another council members. There we go. So we can hear the, the stuff, you know, the things they're saying, the racist shit. All right. So where am I? There I am.
Yeah. So you're in control of it completely. That will, that will probably just be easier.
Okay. Council president, I love the, the picture they chose too. Council president Martinez on DA Gascon, fuck that guy. He's with the blacks. Yep. That's their, that's their headline.
Wow, that is a strong headline.
Earlier this month, an anonymous Reddit account posted several shocking accord, audio recordings. The recordings seem to contain the voices of council, seem to, come on now. They have already admitted it, but all right. Council president Nuri Martinez, council members Kevin De Leon and Gil Cedillo and LA labor federation president Ron Herrera, discussing a wide range of topics of great public interest and being incredibly racist while doing so. The account and those files have since been deleted. Cedilla, Cedillo, Herrera, Martinez and De Leon did not respond to requests for comments. This was probably the first article they were trying to get ahead or whatever, and then get the audio out. So here's what they say. This is all going to be contextless because we do not have the one hour audio. If I did, I would, I would want it immediately, but I do not have access to it. So.
Yeah, maybe we'll be, maybe we'll be able to eventually get it.
There's context here that we don't have access to, that somehow makes this okay, but let's listen to it anyways.
You know, folks like with Gascon, he did call me. He wants to have breakfast with me.
What is taking him so long?
I haven't, I just said, hey, we need to talk.
Gil supporting him for the.
All right. Don't worry. I got you.
He's with the blacks. So you heard that.
Holy fuck.
And then in the recording, council president says of him, fuck, fuck that guy. He's with the blacks. And then there's this one, there's nothing you can do to control him, but I say, you know.
Whatever the kids name them online, it's like the oldest thing, it's like black and brown on the floor. And then there's the, the white guy with the little black kid who's misbehaves. Este niño has no, he's, they're not even, yeah, no, they're not doing, the kid bouncing off the F and wall on the floor. Practically tipping it over. There's nothing you can do to control him. I say changuito and I'm just like, oh my God.
And then there's worse parts of that part when this happens.
They raised him like a little white kid, which I was like, this kid is a beat down. Like let me, let me take him around the corner and then I'll bring him back.
Somehow it gets worse. It gets worse every audio.
So anyway, getting back to redistricting.
Getting back to what we're talking about. Let's get back to the topic. And then it gets worse. It just keeps getting worse.
I see a lot of little short, dark people.
You have little, little Oaxaca, little Oaxaca. I didn't know Kevin, little one.
I don't know where these kids are from. I was like, I don't know what didn't think you had a god here, but.
I get what we have to do, right? This massage to create districts that benefit you all and the future. But we gotta figure out Mark's seat too. You know, that benefits you three.
Is if, if the African American look at this now that the lighter man has been suspended, I don't know what's going to happen. I think if he should be, but anyhow, if he goes away.
You mean resign, not suspend it?
No, here's.
You're right. I think, yeah, there is, there is.
If I may.
If he resigns, hold on, if he resigns and the African Americans look at this as a hostile take over, he's gone. You know, we'll have to figure that shit out because politically they're going to come after.
Yeah, but can I say something? And this is what I call the, the, um, it's the commercial manager sky. It's where that movie, the Wizard of Oz thing. And what I mean by the Wizard of Oz thing is when you're at the side of the curtain, it's like this big voice. So it's something like this tower or something. And then when you actually pull the curtain, you see the little wizard go on. You know what?
I've never watched.
It's the same thing.
It's real simple. You got a hundred people, right? Fifty-two of whom are maybe, I feel pretty good about it. I feel pretty good about my chances of beating your ass.
Twenty-five are black. And there's twenty-five blacks shouting. But these things shout like they're two hundred fifty, but there's a hundred of them.
Wow. What the fuck?
Yeah, gross.
This is awful.
Yeah. Here we go.
If somebody slides in, right, and tampering or however you do it, right? That person has to support the three of you. It has to support the three of you.
Do you know who watch out for that scene?
Doesn't this just remind you of high school, like legit, like they sound like children to me?
I, 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 no one, no one spoke like that, like around me at least, or.
No, not the racism, but like the, the politics of it, like.
Oh, yeah, it's, yeah, their, their mentality is very immature. It's, 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 it's like and then you mix in on top of it, all the racism and how they're talking about other people as if like, a- as if they're less than, than, because what, because, because of the race? Like this doesn't make, oh my god, this is so disgusting.
It's inferior, it's, no, uh, superiority, they have a superiority complex. Okay, so then also.
Yeah, like there's a hierarchy and, you know what I mean, like.
We're the better colored people, right? Colored people, you know, that's what they, you know, they're implying, you know.
They have to oppress somebody, right? I guess, I, I don't know.
Right. Could you nod outside? Thank you, bye. Um, so then the, the next part is very telling. Uh, Herrera tells Martinez, De Leon and Cedillo that they must maneuver the appointment of city council seat to someone who supports them. After De Leon rejects his initial suggestion, they seem to agree on Heather Hutt. Following a controversial process, Hutt was appointed the council member for Council District Ten in September of this year. So then here at the end, it's, uh, Martinez, Cedillo and De Leon come to agree on aggressively gerrymandering. This is mine. They mentioned mine, the one that I voted for that I regretted. Nidia Rahman from my council, from my district, uh, at the end. Here we go.
So there's certain people who don't merit like us rescuing them.
She doesn't merit, right? She's not gonna help us, her district is, not a district who can count on.
You're saying that's the one to put in the blender and chop off, like.
But that's what they did, yeah.
That's how they talk about people. I'm gonna put it in the chat, ladies and gents. It's not a really long one. That's what I'm dealing with in my district, in my, uh, city. And yeah, she's, she's not much better because of her vaccine passport stance that she had. And she was all on board with the Martinez back then. She was like, Nuri, I love you and everything and these tweets. Do you still love Nuri Martinez? Was that worth it? Was it worth it, Nidia? I don't think so.
Wow.
They will stab you right in the back.
That's crazy.
Politics, what are you gonna do?